Okay, I'm sorry, I'm on a little late tonight, so I'm just gonna go forward and still record this and parents can listen on the replay. So yeah, I'm a little backlogged on keeping up with all my IEP meetings and trying to keep everything straight, so I apologize for that, parents, but here we go. I want to just go over again the information that I gave on Monday morning's Facebook Live regarding the legal grounds that you parents have now to ask for in-person services as well as compensatory services because there are many different kinds of legal grounds that you now have when you request your local school district to provide your child with in-person services for any, whatever services you have, you have that right now to demand in-person services. And number two, case law that is now in effect regarding compensatory education, compensatory services. So let me just start with that. So there are four legal examples and grounds that I'm gonna give you for when you ask your local school district for either in-person or compensatory education. So the first one is, there was an executive order that what came down was enacted somewhere in March, I believe, and it is executive order number N-33-20. So that executive order ruled that our service providers for IEPs are essential workers, parents, they are deemed essential workers. So let me list off who those are, okay? So the persuade to the executive order N-3320, the California Department of Education clarified that service providers including nurses, assistants, physical and occupational therapists, social workers, psychologists, optometrists, and speech and language pathologists, and providers serving individuals with disabilities, including developmental disabilities, are essential workers. Therefore, districts are not precluded from providing in-person services and supports in accessing alternative options for learning if remote schooling is not working for that student. So what it's saying is that districts are not precluded, meaning they are not restricted from allowing those service providers to see your child in person because of social distancing, because of the virus, that that the, that does not restrict your districts from allowing service providers to see your child in person. They are essential workers, okay? So when your child is regressing, is not able to access your telehealth services, whatever they might be, physical therapy, speech and language therapy, ABA therapy, behavioral therapy, occupational therapy, psychological therapy, vision therapy, whatever therapy, you can say that you want your child to be able to see those therapists in person, especially if you receive from a non-public agency, which means a private agency, it's not the district providing the service, but it's from a private agency, if it's already on your IEP that you receive services from a private agency, the district cannot tell you, no, you can't go to your private agency in person and, because we're not gonna pay for that, we're not allowed to let you see your private agency in person, they cannot do that. However, they are doing that, they're doing that all over the place. But this executive order deems that they are essential workers. Now, this, the CDE clarified that, but an executive order is a federal mandate, guys, so federal means all states, okay, not just California, it's all states, so I'm getting a lot of, you know, questions about, but that's California, Valerie, no, I'm just saying that the CDE clarified. So, you know, you guys gotta look up in your states if your state clarified that, because they should have, because an executive order is a federal order, okay? So that is the executive order. Now, number two is, the Office of, the OAH, the Office of Administrative Hearings granted a motion to stay put orders and in-person services during school closure, and this happened on August 28th, 2020. I posted the link in my Facebook page, so you can find the link that goes straight to that motion, so you can actually read it yourself. But what it was, was that the Office of Administrative Hearings, now this was in California, but nevertheless, it becomes case law. Case law becomes federal law, because whenever a case is won, it doesn't matter what state is in, it becomes law in all of this, not law in all the states, but it becomes a case law for a reference that, that sets a precedence to when judges make decisions, okay? So the, the Office of Administrative Hearings decision was that the student needs services and supports in person to maintain their mental, physical health and safety for the purpose of supporting the student in accessing the alternative options for learning, for distance learning. A local educational agency is not necessarily precluded from providing that service just because the governor in our state said that we can't see kids in person for schooling. So the OAH overruled the, you know, stay-at-home orders, you can't see anyone in person, blah, 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 because that executive order also deemed that our service providers are essential workers. So a judge said, no districts, you have to allow your service providers to see those kids in person, because they're essential workers, and because those kids can't access their education or their services through telehealth, and they need in-person services. So of course, you're gonna have to make the case to say, my child is not progressing, they're not meeting progress on their goals, they need to be seen in person, because they are not receiving an education, my child's not receiving a free and appropriate public education, and you have to make your case for that, but that's what it says. Okay, so that was an OAH ruling on August 28th, and like I said, the link is in my Facebook page, I posted it there several times, also in the Special Education Parent Empowerment Network group page, it's in there too. So now also in that OAH motion, it also stated that the local public health authority, so in California, the, the Public Health Authority Department, in which the district was located, took the position that they were allowing in-person educational services for any activities that cannot be done remotely and are required for students to be able to obtain their education. So even the local, or California Health Department said, or not California, but where that child, that district that child was in, that that local health department said, we're not saying that, that, that your child can't see in person, so even the health departments said it was okay to see, be seen in person, okay? So I hope you guys are understanding that, okay? So it also said that, that the district could use qualified staff from a non-public agency. So what they're saying is, if the district staffing says, well, I'm not comfortable with that, and I don't wanna see a child in person, because I'm, you know, in fear of the coronavirus, then that district should say, okay, well, then we're gonna have to provide a non-public agency, a private agency, to provide those services in person if a district service provider refuses to see a child in person. It's right there, the order did not, the order did provide that the district could use qualified staff from a non-public agency to provide the services, that the services could be provided also in the student's home, so either the district staff could come to the student's home to receive their services, or the non-public agency personnel could come to the student's home, that's also allowed. And that they were not required to provide the services on school sites or with the school staff. So they said, fine, you don't have to go to the school site, because most schools are shut down, but the school staff can come to the home, or the private agency to come to the home, and if the school staff refuses to come to the home or provide in-person services, then the district has to look at a non-public agency to provide the services, okay? So that was number two. Number three is, now this is case law, so this was a fair hearing that a parent filed for due process, it's case number 2020050465, and that was a compensatory education ruling in which that parent won that case, meaning that the judge ruled in the parent's favor, saying that the district failed to provide that child with their IEP services and supports during March, April, May, and June, and that the district must make up those, that time that they did not provide services. That is a huge win, parents, because as you know, probably, most parents that are asking for services to be made up in March, April, May, and June, the district's going, no, we don't have to, because we got shut down, and we didn't know, and we weren't prepared, and it was unprecedented, and, 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 you know, it happened overnight, and blah, 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 all their excuses, but now there's case law that we can stand on, and case law sets a precedence for all other districts must follow, that yes, you do have to meet with your IEP team, you have to determine how much that child regressed, and they, and they owe you those services, because this parent won, not only for this case, but this was in LAUSD, Los Angeles Unified School District, but there was also a case law that sets precedence, that was in Hawaii, and it was Van Duyen, V-A-N capital D-U-Y-N, versus Hawaii Department of Education. They also won a case for the same thing, that from March to May, that district did not provide that student with their supports and services listed in the IEP, and the judge ruled that that district had to make up for all those supports and services that the child didn't get. So those are two case laws, parents, that were won in a due process by a judge ruled that the district did not implement the IEP from March, April, May, and June, so that gives you the power to say, you owe me, parent, district, you owe me services that you did not provide, and you can base it off of these two case laws, okay? So that's case law that you can cite, and then there's the SB 98, which is in California, and that SB 98 includes in-person instruction. It says SB 98 states that school districts must offer in-person instruction. SB 98 defines in-person instruction as instruction under the immediate physical supervision and control of a certified employee of the local education area while engaged in educational activities required by the student. So even SB 98 says districts must provide in-person services. So those are the four legal grounds that we have now to, you know, appeal and to argue districts' denials to in-person services and to compensatory education for March, April, May, and June. And even now, that schools are open, like in, in one of our districts here, we, they've been open since the beginning of March, so now it's been a month that they've been open, and many of those kids' services still haven't started. So that's another month that, that kids haven't received their services, another month that they have to make up. There is no excuse for districts not to be providing the services listed in the IEP from the beginning of this school year and moving forward, no reason whatsoever, yet all over the place, kids are still not getting their services in the virtual schooling model. That is just not acceptable, okay? So those are the, you know, things I wanted to, because I know it's, you know, kind of confusing, it's very legal, but I hope that you heard all of those four legal grounds. I also, like I said, I posted it in my, on my Advocates for Angels page, and listed the links, and so now I'm gonna take some questions for any parents that wanna ask me any questions about that, because I know it's kind of confusing, and I'm sure parents have questions, but, you know, I'm getting lots of questions, even online comments saying, you know, how does that work, but what about this, what about that? These are legal grounds, parents, so you just, you can cite these legal grounds, and the districts can't argue with it. This is, this is, you know, legal grounds where they, they are violating your parent rights, and they are not meeting the needs of your child by not providing you with in-person services, or not giving you the services that they missed, they're violating IDEA, as the judge, two, three judges ruled in favor of those parents and kids, okay, student. So who has, who has any questions about that? You guys can use those legal grounds in your IEPs. Is there anything you need me to clarify about any of those things? Questions?
So I have a question.
Okay.
Would those grounds stand also on services that are on the IEP, but as, as general ed tutoring, not, not as special education services? For my son, I don't know if you recall, he has, he needed help with a reading intervention program.
Yes.
And they put him in a reading intervention program with a general ed teacher who had training on a special program, and so that's not part of a special education services, although that's what they, it was like a miss, missed, mixed message when they...
Yeah, so that, your, that's not anything that they didn't do. They, they listed what the class was in your IEP, and that's the class you're getting.
So if they didn't provide him that service during the closure, that's not something I can use, the case law that you just mentioned.
Well, so that's a little bit different, because it's not actually a service, like an occupational therapy or speech and language therapy, that is a class, it's a class. So that goes under, it would fall under academic instruction, educational minutes, so, and it's, it's also general education, so it would move into like the area of parents saying, our kids didn't get any teaching time from our teachers, okay? So it's not necessarily service, it would be education. So yeah, you could say, my child didn't receive an education, any instructional minutes during March, April, May, and June, and you could ask for those minutes to be made up, and I guess you would be, could be specific to that classroom time of however long that time was, and that, you know, he, because of that, because that was the reading intervention the district provided to address his reading deficits, that you could ask for that time to be made up. So yes, you could do that, because they, they didn't provide education as well as services.
Right, yeah, they didn't provide any of the services either.
Yes, so yes, you could, you could do that, you could do that. But the other thing about them decreasing the time, if they changed it in the IEP, then it, you always go back to, what does the IEP say, and, and did you sign it? So whenever you have a signed IEP, they have to implement it, no ifs, ands, or buts, they have to implement a signed IEP, it's a legally binding document. So, so, you know, if you signed the IEP that, when they decreased it, then that's all they have to give you. But if you disagreed with the decrease, then stay put stays in effect, and then you have a case.
Well, I never signed a decrease of minutes, they simply said that they notified me by mail with a letter saying that they were gonna decrease the time, but they didn't need my consent.
Right, right. See, and, and it's probably true, because that's a class, it's not a special ed service, and that's why they can do whatever they want to with a general ed class, because it's, if it's not a special ed service, then you have no power over that.
That makes sense, okay.
That's the problem with that. But you still didn't get an education, educational minutes during that time, because in, in one of the, these cases, they, the judge ruled that the student didn't get their instruction that was listed in the IEP, so, so yes, and I can read you that, that, it was, I think it was, yeah, it was for the Hawaii case, the Van Duyen versus Hawaii Department of Education. The distance learning program delivered to the student from March to May fell materially short of adequately implementing the student's IEP by providing the student the number of minutes of instruction required by the student's IEP. So right there, they, the judge said, you didn't give the number of minutes listed in the IEP for instruction, and the type of instruction required for the student to make meaningful progress, okay? So that's what you're talking about, is instruction.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Who else has a question? No more questions, guys? This is your chance. Okay, well, let me know if you guys have any questions on this, and otherwise, I will see you guys on, for the Brigade members, I'll see you this Thursday, we have a Brigade call, and I will see, which is tomorrow, and I will see you there, and you guys can bring me your questions there. But we're gonna be reviewing tomorrow, I'm gonna be teaching a lesson on how to write a partial agreement, and that's what we're gonna be working on tomorrow night, so if you're a Brigade member, be sure and be there, because this is gonna be a great lesson, everybody's, that's kind of where everybody is right now, on the partial agreement step, because the steps that we're doing right now, parents, is, if you're not in my Brigade, this is what you should be doing, is you should be requesting your IEP, you're, you should be preparing for your IEP by writing a parent agenda that outlines all of your concerns, requests, and, and your, what your concerns, requests, and your priorities for your child, okay, moving forward, so that's the parent agenda. Then you go to your meeting, and you make sure that you review every issue in your parent agenda, and you make sure that, that they write it down, that the scribe who's taking the notes writes down every discussion, and that they come to either an agreement or a denial to every one of those issues, and they write it in the notes. Number three, on the parent's, parent agenda, was the parent requests compensatory education, okay? The, the IP team could not make that decision at the meeting today, and therefore, you will receive a prior written notice, PWN. Move on to the next one, and that's how you do every issue, you make sure that they either say yes, or they say no, and if they say no, they have to give you a PWN. You guys, if they don't write it in your notes, it's as if you never asked for it, and you have to call another IEP meeting. So you gotta make sure that they write it down in the notes, what the answer is to whatever the parent agenda says, okay? That is the key to your IEP meeting. So then you have your meeting, then after the meeting, you're gonna get a prior written notice, and your prior written notice is gonna, they're gonna say yes or no to what you asked for. If they say no to what you asked for, then you're gonna write a partial agreement to your IEP. Partial agreement is that you're, you're going to say, move forward with everything else in the IEP, because you want lots of things in your IEP, but then you're in disagreement with this, this, and this, because if they said no, then you're in disagreement with their no. You're not gonna accept their no, you're gonna appeal their no by writing in your partial agreement, I disagree with the district denying my request for blah, 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 and this is why, and then you put your reasons why you disagree with it, why you think that they better do it, and that's you standing up to them, telling them, I'm not gonna sign my IEP in full, and I'm giving you a partial agreement, because I disagree with, and I appealing your no to the district, for the districts, that you're appealing the district saying no to you, because that's how you move forward with winning and getting what you want, is through a partial agreement, okay? And then, after the partial agreement comes, so they're gonna move forward with everything that you agreed upon, but then you have things in dissent, that you disagreed upon, and then, that, they, they should have another IEP meeting to resolve your dissent of where you didn't agree in your IEP, that's in your partial agreement, and then you're gonna negotiate with them, now it's negotiating time, because the district didn't get your signature on their, on your IEP, and the district is required by law to get your signature on the IEP, so they're gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna try to get you to sign that IEP. So now you have the power, the ball's in your park, when you don't sign your IEP, and you write a partial agreement instead. So now you're gonna, then you, most likely, you would have another IEP meeting, and then you negotiate, and you say, this is what I want, you know, and then you, you somehow meet in the middle and find a resolution to what you want, and if you do get a resolution, then you decide your IEP. If you don't get a resolution, and they still say no at that next IEP, that's when you write a compliance complaint after that. Those are the steps to move through this situation, and really, those are the steps for any situation, even if we weren't in virtual schooling, that's how you advocate, and you win, and you get what you want, in any situation that you are having problems with, for your child. Okay? Does anybody have questions about those steps? Because those are really the advocacy steps that I teach parents in the Brigade, because most parents don't understand how to write a parent agenda, don't understand how to write a partial agreement, don't understand how to hold an IEP meeting and make sure that they don't delay you more, that they don't write falsified notes in the IEP, because they never write things down properly, or they don't give you an answer, and then you have to call another IP and ask for it again, then they don't give you an answer again, and they delay you, delay you, delay you, delay. And that's what they do to parents that don't know these advocacy steps that I teach parents, so that this is what I do, is I teach you exactly what I do, and how I do it, and I give you the scripts and the, and the letters, and teach you how to do that in the parent brigade. Does anybody have any questions or clarification on those things?
I just wanna make a comment to all the parents, that just to make sure that, like Valerie said, somebody is taking notes, because on my last IEP, they did it just that, and I had to spend over an hour of my own time going all over all the notes, just and listening to the IEP at the same time, to make sure that they got everything.
Yep. And they're very tricky, because they were, they'll be super nice, and they'll act like they're working with you, and they'll act, and it'll seem like things are going well, but then you have to make sure that you have them read the notes before you end the meeting, and what I like to do is, I like to have them, don't wait till the end of the meeting to read the whole two hours of notes, because how are you gonna remember what you said two hours ago, right? So you read the notes af, before you move on to the next issue. So you go, you, you look at issue number one on your parent agenda, you have that discussion, they either say yes or no, and then you say, could you please read those notes before we move on to the next? They read the notes, and then you say, oh, you forgot this, oh, you didn't write that, oh, that's not correct, that's not what I said. That's not what I said. And you fix the notes. Then you move on to the next one. They don't like that. They're going to fight you on it. They're not going to want to do that because then you're holding them accountable to not delaying you and to making sure things are documented properly. So, um, yeah, that's their game. And, uh, that's, that's...
Yeah.
Go ahead, Angie.
How this feel like? In my notes where they said I was, never said that, I'm concerned. So I had to go back and say, I never said that. Please remove that statement that I'm not concerned about that goal.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, they falsify notes. They write things parents never said. Or when you, you say what you're, what you're concerned about, they don't write it the way you said it. They like, they water it down and they make it sound not like a big deal. Yeah, that's what they do. Yep.
And with the partial agreement, when you get back to the table and you're at negotiating point, what if you still don't agree with them? Then what happens?
Yeah, so that's, that's when I said, um, that you wouldn't sign that IEP. Once again, if you go back to the table and you don't get what you want, then that's another unsigned IEP. So now you got two unsigned IEPs. That's when you write a compliance complaint. That's when you write a compliance complaint. Yep. That's, that's the process.
I never, I never knew that you could do that. I thought you just stayed at a stay put. So then the next step would be a compliance complaint. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
A stay put is just going to give you what you had before, but it's not going to win you what you want now. So how you get what you want now, you got to take it up a notch. And, and up a notch is either compliance complaint or you file for due process. That's the next step. Because you got to show them, because they don't care, you know? So, uh, they're, and they're testing you to see, how far is this parent going to go? Is this parent going to take it to the, you know, highest level of advocacy, which is a compliance complaint or a due process hearing? And they wait and see what you're going to do. And then once you do that next step, that's when they're going to really start thinking about, okay, what can we offer this parent to make them happy? Because they, they prove they're not going to give up and they're not going to let us get away with saying no. Yep. Anybody else? Now, and sometimes, you know, when that happens, um, they'll, they'll offer you to write what's called a settlement agreement. Okay? So a settlement agreement is a more legal document. It's like, it's like, okay, you're, you're at a crossroads. You're in a dissent, um, with the district. And so you're not disagreeing. So they, so that they will write what's called a compla- I mean, a settlement agreement. Settlement agreements are very iffy and very scary because what they do is in the, in the settlement agreement is they'll give you what you want, but then they, they want you to waive all of your rights. They want you to say, I give up all my rights to, to looking at anything else from all the past to this date that I'm never going to, I'm never going to sue the district. I'm never going to ask to make up anything. I'm never, I can't disagree with anything that ever had in the past, happened in the past at, until the date that, that, that settlement agreement was dated. And so that sucks when they want you to waive your rights. Um, they'll al- also stick a bunch of other stuff in there to cover their ass that you don't want in there. And so it's very, um, you know, challenging to, when they want to write a s- you know, if they say, we're going to write a settlement agreement, that they're going to try to screw you over. So you should never sign a settlement agreement unless you're working with an attorney or an advocate, and a good attorney or an advocate. Because if you have a crappy attorney or an advocate, they're going to screw you over by having you sign a settlement agreement that's going to waive your rights and it's going to lock you into something you don't want to be locked into moving forward. That happens all the time, too. So, you know, when you get up to that step, that's, that's a hot, that, you know, an advanced, advanced advocacy step. And that's okay. You know, you, you can do it, but you got to be careful. And you have to be supervised and guided by a professional who knows what they're doing. Okay? But these other steps that we're doing now, all those parents can learn and do. That, those are absolute parent rights that you should know how to implement and that you can do. Any parent can do these other things that I'm teaching you. Even write a compliance complaint. Because it's a form and, 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 you know, you just have to know what law to cite that they're violating. And, uh, if you write it correctly, you can win a compliance complaint. But you ha- you do have to write it the right way. And it takes some studying and, you know, work to write it the right way. Because I've seen a lot of parents write a compliance complaint and they just lose because they didn't write it correctly. Okay? Anybody else have a question? Okay, guys. I hope everybody, um, registered for the, uh, the advocacy roundtable on September 17th. The registration's been out. I've been posting on social. You should have gotten an email from me, too, to register. So, uh, it's September 17th at 5:00 PM Pacific Time. And we're going to have Judge Mark Levine on the panel and other advocates from across the nation on the panel, too. And we're going to be talking about virtual schooling and all the problems with virtual schooling. And we're going to be helping parents what to do, how to advocate these steps that I've been teaching you. But I want to bring in other professionals for, to also on a panel for, so we can discuss what's going on, what are the best steps parents can take? And kind of, um, we can kind of, as, um, advocates and a, um, a judge, we can talk to each other about what are they experiencing in, in different states? Because I have friends that are advocates in other states and we talk all the time and they're, they're experiencing a lot of the same things we're experiencing here in California, especially with the in-person thing. You know, they're experiencing that, too. But really, the, those districts are unlawfully denying, uh, kids in-person services when it should, they should, they should not be doing that. But it's just because parents don't know how to cite these, um, you know, legal grounds that I gave you tonight, that they have to give us in-person services. So we're going to be discussing things like that. Okay? Okay, guys?
Valerie, is that, it, one more question before you go. Is that list of, um, all of your information for the laws, was that in that thick, big book, white book that you showed us? Is that where you get all your laws from?
No, this list is, is new case law and, and, uh, and executive orders and, um, and motions from the Office of Administrative Hearings. No, this was in my Monday Facebook Live. I went through this whole thing. I just went through it tonight. This is all new stuff.
But what about for like the old stuff? Like if you're doing a compliance complaint and you need to put in a law that's not in those? Is that from that book?
Yeah, that, though, that is, that is IDEA regulations and California Education Code regulations. Those, that's what that is. So, um, it's just, um, yeah, that's IDEA, federal law and state law. So, so you find, you find the right, um, state and federal law that they, that they broke, that they violated, and that's what you cite in your compliance complaint. Yeah. Right?
Right, great.
Okay, guys. I'll see you on Thursday if you're in the brigade. Uh, other than that, I'll see you on Monday at the Facebook Live. Take care, everyone.